Thank you, Commissioners. And Item C is the, from the Department of Human Resources to review the manual of personnel policies and procedures. And we'll continue the discussion. Good morning.
Good morning again. On May 24th, we met to review the proposed changes to the manual for personnel and policy procedures. I have followed up on a few pending items that arose during that meeting and provided a summary memo. If I could draw your attention to that. And if we could start at the back, please. One of the items that we discussed on the 24th was the removal of references to personnel from the sheriff's office. And I confirmed with Sheriff Cameron that his policy manual will be effective July 1. That was one of the pending items. And then similarly, reviewed our approach with Legit. That was another request that arose from that meeting. And they approve and support the approach that we're taking.
Okay.
A pending item from the 24th was a discussion about how paid leave would be handled for employees who are also involved in the volunteer fire and rescue community. And you'll see at the bottom of the memo, proposed language to address that. So I have proposed that we add to our manual, the sentence, "Employees who use leave as a result of responding to an emergency will have their leave restored. Upon verification from the employee and certification from the volunteer squad, leave will be restored July 1 and January 1 of each year." Do you know if anyone has any comments on that?
I think the, that's good for the fire and rescue, a good portion. However, one thing I do want to discuss is the possession and carrying of weapons and dangerous instruments by employees.
Yes, and that arose since our meeting on the 24th. Commissioner O'Connor reached out to me and wanted us to review the policy that discusses weapons in the workplace. And if I can draw your attention to the manual that you have, it is section 15-2.
Fifteen and two?
Yes. So it's page 15-2. And it would be right at the top, Item C, I believe is the paragraph that Commissioner O'Connor wanted reviewed. We spoke last week about that. And I reviewed the request with our county attorney. And then also, I am on a listserv with all of the HR directors throughout Maryland and sent a request throughout the state to see what other counties, how they have approached this. And if I am speaking correctly, Commissioner O'Connor, I think that the reason that this came up was because of Maryland's concealed carry law. And are we in compliance or does our policy need to be changed? Through a recommendation from Commissioner O'Connor and the county attorney, I request that we remove the last word where it says, "Violation of the weapons prohibition set forth may result in termination of employment and prosecution." And remove the "and prosecution" is my recommendation.
My first request was to have it completely stricken and then try and figure out a compromise from it. I disagree 100% with this policy even being in the county policy. One, I think there's some finer points to this. And one is, you can't legislate evil. You can't make policy to stop evil. I think this is a very liberal approach to something that does not need to be in place. Every active shooter that's happened in the United States has been in a gun-free zone. The bad people, bad guys, the criminals are going to bring guns anyway. If we have an employee that was subject to a domestic violence and they have a concealed carry permit from the Maryland State Police, then we are now asking them to go ahead and make a choice between their life and their job. We have avid hunters in the county. They, let's say it's Saturday morning and they want to go ahead and go to their duck line and go hunting. And then their kid has a game at Dorsey Park, which is controlled by the county. They now have to choose whether they're going to go home, put their firearm up, or go there and see their kid. Or risk losing their job because somebody sees a firearm in their vehicle because it's a county-controlled property. This county is avid hunters, avid sportsmen with firearms. I disagree in any regulation of these firearms on county property. I don't think it's there. We already have enough rules and regulations. And I would much rather have our county employees that have a concealed carry permit that have been vetted by Maryland State Police or passed a background investigation under HQL, have a firearm than anybody else. This policy does not stop citizens from bringing firearms onto county government property. There's no law prohibiting them. That would have to be passed by Annapolis in our delegation, whom I've had conversations with about this. I think it's all around a horrible policy. It's restrictive of the Second Amendment rights of our employees. And I think it'd be stricken from the policy. There's no need to have it. This is also something else that's not addressed is our retired law enforcement officers that are county employees. They have a right under HR 219 to carry a firearm. And the reason we have that right is, one, to protect ourselves against the criminals that we locked up. So I'm not going to, and protect the citizens that are there if we need to intercede. So by having this, we're restricting them from carrying a firearm that may be able to go ahead and stop something before it actually happens from the, somebody that's mentally unstable. I think what we need to focus on here is not the policy of restricting firearms, but training for our employees on identifying the signs of an active shooter, mental health awareness, the things, all the little key indicators that go into this, rather than saying, "Our employees can't have firearms." And that's going to be the miraculous cure-all for workplace violence or an active shooter situation. I mean, the recent shooting down in terrorist act in Florida, that was a gun-free zone. It solved nothing. So I think this policy is a horrible one. I think it's everything I personally stand against. I mean, or stand for, I should say, with the 2A. It's against it, against it all. It's going to do nothing. Except make people have to choose between their firearms and their job, or their safety and their job.
Did you say you had researched that throughout the state?
I did.
And the answer, just help me clarify, the answer you got back from the rest of the state?
Every county prohibits weapons in the workplace, with the exception of Calvert. And Calvert has an exception for people who have permits.
Okay, thank you.
And I should clarify, except in courthouses. In courthouses in Calvert, you are not allowed, whether you have a permit or not, to have a weapon.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think one of the things to point out with that is pretty much the rest of the state is controlled by Democrats, liberal Democrats at best. And they're the ones that pushed for this legislation, Annapolis, to restrict firearms. Our delegation went up there and fought against legislation that was trying to be pushed for college campuses to go ahead and do the same thing that we're doing here. I don't care what the rest of the state is doing. They're Democrats, they're liberals, they're pushing the anti-gun agenda in Annapolis. They want to take away our firearms. And their policies are just another way to do that. The same, this is not what St. Mary's County is about. We haven't had it, we don't need it, and it's not going to stop any violence.
I don't know if guns are Democrat or Republican issue. I do support the right to own a gun, have a gun. But I do say this, guns, people have guns around, makes me nervous. No good reason to have a gun around on public property. Granted, if you're hunting, you put it in the trunk. You do not leave it open. But I think the key here, Commissioner O'Connor, is that, is how people feel about their public safety, how they feel about their own safety when people are around with sidearms or any kind of arms. I believe of what we're seeing in this country has definitely got us talking about the gun issue. Not about taking them away, firmly supporter of Second Amendment rights, but I still say, if everybody else isn't doing it, it doesn't make sense that we should. And it's not about liberals and conservatives, it's about public confidence or public safety and how people feel around guns. I don't like being around guns if I'm in an event that doesn't really require people to have guns. Now, if it's police officers who are on duty, sure. But I don't like guns just because people want to wear guns.
I think that the issue I would take with it is kind of, the fact that someone has a permit to carry a weapon. They've already been vetted, they've been cleared. And Commissioner O'Connor does bring up a good point. This policy, of course, can only apply to that which we have control over, which would be county employees. So this is not to prevent anybody who's a non-county employee from coming to a county park with a concealed permit, or a concealed weapon, assuming they have a permit.
Or with any weapon.
And if they were to interact with a police officer who, someone said, "Hey, I think that person's carrying a weapon," they could show their permit and the police officer would necessarily have to say, "They're in the rights to do so, they have a permit." So I think we risk a little bit of Second Amendment overreach if you try to reach out to people who are legally licensed to do so. I understand Commissioner O'Connor's point about hunting. Lord knows, we deal with this a lot. All the federal contractors who go deer hunting, sun sets early in the field, you've got to get out to the field before you disturb the other hunters. You're at work, you cannot take your gun on the base. You definitely better not have the gun in your trunk when you go to the base. So you have to keep it outside. So it's not the first time we've seen that. It is an inconvenience, for sure. You have to have your weapon over where you're going to go hunting, or you have to keep it in an alternative location so that you can go do the hunting. But I will yield to your comments on the permitted people for carrying a weapon. I think a retired police officer has a concealed permit, should have the right to carry it. He's been vetted, it makes sense to me.
I think we need, this is my, of course, I'm a hunter too, yeah. But anyway, the strong language, "The possession or carrying of a weapon or dangerous instrument by employees or contractors is strictly prohibited in county property." I think we need to look that language a little bit closer. If I am going duck hunting in the morning, as he permitted, I would say that before entering county property, I need to secure that, like, i.e. in the trunk, the back of my pickup, maybe behind the seat of the pickup, in a carried case, locked. Something of that language should be in there. Not necessarily saying I can't carry any weapon onto the grounds. I think we need to relook at that particular sentence, for sure.
My original amendment was that the possession of firearms will be in compliance with all Maryland applicable laws. And what you just stated was, was that, that if you're transporting a firearm, it does need to be secured, the ammo needs to be separate.
Correct.
If you're a concealed carry holder, you need to have your permit on you. All the other things that is taught in the HQL, taught in the concealed carry course, taught in everything along those lines. I mean, the state already dictates all the transport of a firearm and how you should do it. So if anything, the policy could read that, you know, the possession of firearms needs to be in accordance with all Maryland applicable laws.
Exactly.
And just take what the state already has and say, "Okay, you need to follow what the state says."
Talking about the Pawtucket Basin base, I used to hunt on Pawtucket River, and you had to get, quote, "A permit." And the process was, you had to have the weapon secured, the ammunition separate, and you had a card that you were allowed to do such a thing, even driving on that base. Now, they vetted me, I suppose, for that.
But again, this is all controlled, vetted processes where the individuals are carrying firearms, that pass certain certifications, they wouldn't be allowed to do it in the first place. And, you know, I concur with Commissioner O'Connor, whereas, you know, the Maryland state law is probably sufficient here. I do understand that we have the latitude to be more restrictive, of course we do. But I'm a Second Amendment kind of guy myself, and I don't think, I think there are certainly exceptions. And if someone's been vetted and has the proper permits in place, I think, and I think we get, we can run ourselves in trouble trying to increase the policy here locally with all the little nuances we just brought up. You know, because we don't really want to get into the policy, we don't want to get into a practice of writing policy to restate state policy. For example, on how to carry a firearm if you're a hunter. Certainly, Department of Natural Resources teaches people how, when you get your certificate, on what you can and can't do. And if you get pulled over by the state police, they'll be happy to tell you whether you're in right or wrong with the way you're carrying your weapon.
Do we have?
I think it's kind of difficult if, I probably have the opinion that I think we should hold the state regulations and not further define.
Do we have a copy of the state regulations on this, as far as carrying weapons on government property?
Or could we make a proposal to have Catherine go back and work with Mr. Sparling on getting the language correct and coming back?
I think that's the right.
For that to amend this to more be in line with state policy, et cetera, versus us trying to come up with something at the dice today.
Okay, let's table this then, until you can do that, is that agreeable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. It was a lot of work to put this together.
I'm sorry. You and Mr. Sparling get together on that, then please try to come up with a state policy. Thank you very much.
And would you like to review any of the other changes? Or should we just do it when we come back?
The other changes, let's go to the rest of them, too.
Okay.
Complete that, and then this is just another, one more change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, go over them now or next week when I come back?
Why don't you go through the rest of the changes today?
Go ahead and finish them all now, and then just.
And just table that one.
Okay.
So when you come back, we'll just have that one change.
Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So if you turn to the front page of the memo, I tried to summarize the items that were more impactful, that are the proposed changes. I believe on the 24th, we reviewed the idea of adding a whistleblower policy, adding the idea that retaliation against employees who report in good faith is prohibited. We added a social media policy. We've expanded, we prohibit tobacco products and smoking in county buildings, and we've expanded that to include e-cigarettes and chewing tobacco. We've added the idea that visitors to campus should be accompanied by county employees. Communication, clarified that communication from the county attorney is for the exclusive use and benefit of county government. And then both with secondary employment and conflict of interest, we have a process where that is approved. And then we've added the idea that an employee can appeal what that decision is to the county administrator, to that process. And please stop me if there's any questions or concerns or comments.
Sounds good.
For pay, we've added a stipend to employees who provide language assistance to non-English speaking citizens. This is in line with many other counties, and this is if somebody had trouble and we had, our intention is that we'll have a list in Human Resources of employees who are bilingual. And then if a citizen is having trouble communicating with you, for example, the employee could assist. And then the stipend would be $35 an hour. The estimated annual expense is not more than $500. And that's something that the county administrator can assume in the current budget.
So just to pull that string a little bit, is, when you put out job announcements, you usually have two sections, right? You have the required and then the desired. If somebody were to apply and have a second language, would you say it's, it would help their application, or it would help their standing in the application process if they were to draw that out in the application?
I don't know. Because I don't know if that ability for the specific job that they're applying for would be necessary, yes.
It probably wouldn't hurt, right?
Correct. And we have current employees who are bilingual, and we know that just because, so what our intention was, was to send an email to employees and ask if they want to be on this list, if this is a service that they would like to provide.
We're not really going to advertise jobs for.
You could put it as desired, if you have multiple languages listed, just because, again, we're trying to provide services with a very lean budget and operating at a very tight schedule. So if somebody can offer a little bit more, I'll mean.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And this is, I believe we addressed this on the 24th, the floating holiday hours provided to employees called back to work on a non-premium holiday. And that addresses the snow issue from President's Day. Salary for entry-level communications specialists will increase after completion of field training. This is an attempt to address, it's not uncommon that we train our entry-level communications specialists and then they leave, because the pay in other counties is higher. So this is to address that and to try to help our pay be more competitive. It's an estimated expense of about $2,500 annually per new employee who falls into this range and can be absorbed in salary savings. So it's not an additional budget expense. Similarly, our entry-level communications specialists currently, if they want to be considered for a promotion, you have to be in the position for a certain length of time, and that clock doesn't begin until after your training. And this recommendation is to have that clock begin from the date of hire. Again, an attempt to retain employees once we've trained them. And then our policy, as it currently is written, if you're 24/7 personnel and you are scheduled to work during an emergency, you do not receive emergency pay. And we felt, in fairness, that that should be changed. So if you're working during an emergency, whether you're scheduled or not, you should be eligible for emergency pay.
Those are your non-exempt employees or exempt employees?
Correct.
Just non-exempt.
Non-exempt, right.
Thank you.
So the estimated expense is about $2,500 per emergency. And then that would be included in the budget request, the budget amendment to pay for the emergency.
And that covers essential personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
Benefits, so currently, if you choose to travel in a privately-owned vehicle, when a government one is available, it states in the manual that you may have reduced mileage reimbursement, and this just strengthens the statement to let employees and managers know that if government vehicles are available and you're making the choice not to use them, you're not going to be reimbursed at the full amount. And we would follow the GSA schedule for that.
So how do you, what's?
How's that number work?
So you're taking a GSA JTR, how do you discount? What would that look like?
So I believe, and I don't know if geneticists, on the travel form, I think there's going to be a common statement on the travel reimbursement form that states, you know, was there a county vehicle? Right.
So what would that percentage reduction be? I guess I'm trying to understand.
It's almost half, isn't it?
It's half on the GSA. It says if you do this, if you take a county vehicle, if there's one available, it's here, and then.
Half of the rate.
I'm going to assume that also covers if one of our employees wants to fly, so they get the GSA reimbursement for the mileage of flying, since we're using the GSA schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. A proposal to increase tuition reimbursement subsidy from $2,000 annually per employee to $2,800. We currently have a budget of $30,000 for tuition expense, and that budget is, has not been spent in full.
Wow.
So this is in recognition of the fact that tuition expenses are increasing, and for the employees who are utilizing it, it would be more of an assistance to them. So it does not increase the budget.
How much of this is getting spent?
About, about $2,200 was last year.
About $30,000? You spent $2,200?
Mm-hmm. Twenty-two, I'm sorry, $22,000, excuse me. And that's a high, and that was a high year.
Well, it's good people are going back to school and try to use the benefit. That's the important part.
Yes. Yep. A request that grandchildren be considered eligible, an eligible family member for bereavement leave and for sick leave. So currently, under our definition of eligible family members, you can use your sick leave to care for somebody, and grandchildren are not included in that list. So this is a request to include them. Employees who are leaving county employment would like to donate their sick leave if there's a current employee requesting sick leave, and we don't have a provision for that currently. So this is a request to do that.
If they're leaving, are they reimbursed for it?
Pardon?
Can they be reimbursed for their sick leave if they're leaving county employment?
No, they're not.
They just forfeit it?
Correct. If you're retiring in the state retirement, that may help your benefit calculation, your sick leave, so you may choose to keep it. But a lot of times, people want to donate it.
Okay.
And then currently, if you are in a FMLA leave, you're required to use all of your paid leave first. And we've had some employees request the flexibility of using unpaid leave if they wish to save their paid leave because they may have a vacation planned later in the year, something like that. So this is just to allow for that flexibility if the employee wishes it.
What do we do for FMLA with maternity? Do we allow anything for the male half? Or the father, I should say? Actually, I mean, it depends, you know.
There is male and female.
Well, not necessarily. So I guess I should say, in a relationship.
The partner, the partner.
In a partnership, do we allow for FMLA for the other half that's not having the child to take an extended leave along that is comparable to the?
FMLA, yes.
Oh, so there is a provision there for that?
So if they get three months, then the male half would get three months.
The 12 months.
Or the other half would get three months.
Probably.
Okay, so 12 weeks. Other half would get 12 weeks.
Yep. We've updated some of our policies to be in compliant, compliance. So the American with Disabilities Act has been updated, the language around that. We've added a prohibition against discriminating for anyone who is pregnant. We've added that nursing mothers are granted time to express milk, and these are all in accordance with legislation. We've updated the salary threshold for non-exempt employees to comply with the new regulations. We prohibit cellphone use and text messaging while driving county vehicles. And then the proposed change to the weapons, but that will be revisited.
Okay.
Our attorney.
This handheld cellphone use and text messaging prohibited. There's some exclusions in the law for emergency situations or essential personnel. Can we make sure that's put in there? Because there's some exclusions in there that allow for cellphone use to be used for essential personnel things. It may just be restrictive to law enforcement, but there is exclusions in there. The sheriff's office has their own policy on what they do with hands-free, but I just want to make sure that we're addressing that as well.
Okay. Absolutely. I'll take a look at what that law is, and I'll bring that back next week.
It may just be on the public safety side, so, yeah, it, but I just want to make sure it's taken.
Sure. I'm not familiar, so I'll look at that.
Thank you.
We had a kind of goofy situation with a business that I own for the insurance purposes. We had, because we had liability insurance for our employees traveling to and from Pax River, for example, they actually made us put in our corporate policy that cellphone use was prohibited in any vehicles, to include the employees' cars. Not that you could enforce it, but it was some way to say that the company had a policy against it in case an accident happened. You seen anything like that?
I have not. So that implies that if you're using your own car to travel in company business?
You're still responsible. Yes.
The other thing is rental vehicles are not, there's nothing expressed on there about rental vehicles. So if you're on county business in a rental vehicle, it should be considered a county vehicle.
The nuances, I would say Legit would be a good place to ask that question.
Absolutely.
I will.
Yeah, absolutely.
I will.
Yeah.
There are two additional items I'd like to draw your attention to, if I could. And if you could go to the draft manual, section 19-6. And this is a proposal for on-call pay. So currently, we have employees who are on-call for a week at a time, and they're required to respond, and they're expected to be back at work within 15 days of receiving the call. And we don't compensate them for that. If they come back into work, there's a method, there's call-back pay, and then they're paid. But this idea of being paid because you are on-call is a proposal that arose during our review of the manual. Our suggestion is that this is included in the FY '18 budget process, because it's estimated that it would be about a $16,000 additional expense. So it would not be included in this current revision, but included in the budget discussion, and if approved, then added to the manual at that time.
I concur with.
That's fair, yeah.
Putting it out so we can have time to look at it.
Okay.
I would say that it'd probably be broad rather than just DPW, because there could be a situation where the EOC is activated and our dispatchers are told, "Yeah, you can go home, but you're on-call. You can't leave the county, can't do anything like that." So I think it should be a little bit more broad on how that's applied and left to the department heads to go ahead and make that call of whoever's on-call.
Okay. And then similarly, in Chapter 5, we have proposed in HR that when reclassifications are approved in the budget, and we would be undergoing a reclassification process, that we would use the assistance of the compensation consultants. They have estimated it would cost about $150 per request, and we would estimate um, and we would estimate, um, because we haven't had any reclasses approved in a while, that there might be, uh, up to about sixty requests. Again, this would be, um, not included in the manual as it is currently approved this summer, um, but included in the budget request next spring.
Sure.
That's five-eleven.
Uh, chapter five.
Five-dash-three.
Are, are we using a consultant to do this, because we lack the resources in HR to go ahead and make that, um, adjustment?
No, I think it's, um, and I don't have a lot of history here, but I think in the past, when HR was involved in those decisions, they have been challenged. And, um, this was just a way to, we would work on it together, and it would add authority to the decision.
Yeah, I think one of the things when we, when we're talking about consultants, even though it may seem like a hundred and fifty dollars, it, it's how many challenges are we gonna get, and how much the taxpayers' money's gonna be sent on this. If we already have the resources in HR, and, and basically, we should not, we shouldn't have to use a consultant to go ahead and do this. If they wanna challenge HR, use the director, you're there, that, you have the final word regardless of what the compensation consultant says anyway. So you could disagree with it and make that decision. I don't think there's a need to spend the taxpayer money on using a consultant every single time to do a compensation study. You're very well qualified, and the person in that position should be qualified enough to go ahead and make that adjustment.
So maybe we, we don't have all the information, though, because we don't know how many challenges were made, and what the situation is. So it's your, your proposal to look at this for next fiscal year seems appropriate to me, yes.
Next fiscal year.
Okay, good.
Good. Anybody else, any, any other questions, anybody?
So only question, Commissioner Guy, um, we agreed to table, but nobody actually tabled it, so I think we need to take a vote.
Do you need to have a motion on that, uh?
I make a motion, we table, uh, the approval of the manual personnel policies and procedures until the corrections are made as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names, ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.